Thank you and good evening. Welcome everyone to the first meeting of the Milton Select Board during the 2023 calendar year and happy new year to all. I'm Arthur Doyle, serving as this year's chair and the other members of the Select Board present tonight's vice chair. So Lewis, would you introduce yourself?
Thank you, Arthur. My name is Mike Zulus. I'm the vice chair this year.
Mr. Wells.
Good evening, Richard Wells, secretary.
Ms. Bradley.
Good evening, Aaron Bradley, member.
Roxanne.
Good evening, Roxanne Musto, member.
And our town administrator.
Hi, Nicole Milano, town administrator.
And our executive assistant.
Hi, Linda Appleby.
Thank you. Mike is vice chair. Should I have to excuse myself at any point during the meeting for reasons known to you and I, I'll call upon you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. On July 16, 2022, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, one of which is occurring tonight, which among other things extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31, 2023. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July 15, 2022 to March 31, 2023. Under this provision, all votes will be taken by roll call. Would everybody please join in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Into the public. Which is just dance.
One nation.
One nation. Under God. Inter business.
With liberty and justice.
For all. Thank you. Let's turn to item three on the agenda, public comment, just to be fresher to the effect that a public comment is 15 minutes set aside with any one individual having up to three minutes to speak. And we ask that each of them cite their name and give their address in the town. The first hand is that of John David Corey. Could you please promote John David?
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you very much, John David Corey, 1452 Canton Avenue in Milton. And I just wanted to take a moment to just talk about the traffic calming around town. I know we have the traffic mitigation report and I'm still hoping that that report and the recommendations were on a robust plan to implement those and really be making it priority in the town. I mean, I know there are a lot of divisive things in the town, but I just don't see, I see the traffic issues just cutting through this town and I just, it's chopping up neighborhoods and it really affects everybody's quality of life. So I would just like to stress that the traffic calming mitigation items all about town are critical items, specifically Randolph Avenue. And again, I commend Mr. Milano's e-letter to the DOT, very strongly worded back in, it was actually back in, she said, I don't have, I have it here. The letter was, time is moving. It was November the 7th, the letter was issued to the DOT and it asked for a 30-day deadline. And actually, the DOT was pretty good because they did respond within the 30 days and it was actually Michael Dowd, who was extremely capable person at the DOT. It can really actually help the town quite a bit. From my understanding is that the Select Board did not follow up with their own letter and also a deadline. So now I'd just like to say is that the deadline was December the 6th or 7th around there and now we're January the 3rd. So here we are, one month. As far as I know, or as far as the residents know, nothing has happened. So I would just like to remind the town Select Board and administrator to really keep the feet, keep them, keep the feet, the fire going on the DOT and perhaps we could put another deadline down with some immediate propositions as far as traffic signal timing. I mean, simple things just to slow the cars down and allow people to get out of their driveways with some spaces. I mean, we have the Hillside Streetlight and we have the Reed Streetlight already in place. We can use those to our benefits. So just please keep the DOT feet to the fire and thank you for your time on this. I know it's not an easy solution, anything here, but we can pick at it and we can get there. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. The next hand that was raised in order in which they were raised is that of Alex Hatcher.
Hi, can you hear me?
Alex, we can. Welcome back to you.
Oh, thank you. So good evening. My name's Alex Hoshen. I'm a Milton resident residing at 134 in a Hampton Avenue and also a board member of Sustainable Milton. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak again tonight. I just wanted to briefly voice my support for Mr. Zulus's proposal to form a town committee to coordinate development, approval and execution of a municipal climate action plan, which is, I think, item 14 tonight. While it's true we have a lot of committees in Milton, that doesn't change the urgency of the need for this one. Massachusetts has legally committed to far-reaching changes to our energy, transportation and building infrastructure in order to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions. And these changes are going to impact Milton significantly, whether we're prepared or not, and they're already in motion. They also present opportunities, including significant funding for local projects and financial incentives for residents. And in many cases, such as with our community electricity aggregation program, the town needs to take action to enable residents to benefit from those opportunities. We don't want to end up playing catch-up bearing the costs of the energy transition without the benefits. Climate change isn't a niche issue that should be left to a small group of volunteer activists. It's a lens through which almost every business as usual decision needs to be examined. And so a committee with members who also sit on the town's core leadership boards will be best positioned to ensure our plans are practical, beneficial and well-integrated into the town's operations. I think the committee charge that Mr. Zulus is proposing takes us in the right direction and I hope that you will all on the Select Board engage constructively to craft a committee charge that sets Milton up for success, successful climate action. Again, thanks for your time and attention. That's all.
Your comments. The next hand is that of Tucker Smith. Could we recognize Tucker, please? Tucker, you are on mute. There you go. No? Tucker, you are still muted.
All right. Take two. Sorry. My name is Tucker Smith. My husband and I have owned a home at 1632 Canton Avenue since 1979 and I'm shocked when I do the math and find that that's 44 years. I am a Sustainable Milton board member as well and long active in numerous town organizations, many of them environmental. I am grateful to Mr. Zulus for drafting a proposal to form a climate action planning committee and wholeheartedly support it. The need to mitigate climate change impacts caused by greenhouse gas emissions is urgent. We have tools in our kit such as emergency, excuse me, community expertise, technology, legislation, incentives and passion. Time is what we lack. Motivating me the most without question is that I am blessed to have two grandchildren under the age of three. Leaving a legacy of a healthy, stable planet Earth to them and to all children everywhere, especially the most impacted frontline communities is my goal. I want to be able to tell them that Milton stepped up. We changed the way we built and retrofitted, traveled around and powered our town to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 in accordance with Massachusetts general law. We changed our habits and put aside business as usual mindsets. I believe that the benefits of taking action will pay back financially, will safeguard public health and biodiversity and will create infrastructure which we will long rely upon in the future. The responsibility for this cannot fall to Sustainable Milton or to town staff as well, the staff hardworking at Town Hall. Transparent, fair, collaborative, climate and energy planning is best accomplished in the manner Mr. Zulus has proposed and I respectfully urge Milton Select Board members to agree. Thank you for your consideration tonight and the opportunity to speak.
And thank you. And I should note for you and the others who submitted record, written comments that they will be entered into the record as such. Next speaker, and I apologize if I don't pronounce your name correctly. I have a good friend named Randy Dyke, Randall Dyke. So I'm going to say Tracy Dyke Redmond and you can correct me, Tracy, if I'm wrong.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tracy Dyke Redmond. I live at 9 Ellsworth Road and I have been a resident of Milton for over 10 years. I'm also an active member of Sustainable Milton. I would like to support the proposal to form a climate action planning committee and I am sincerely grateful to Mike Zulus for bringing this proposal to the Select Board. Climate change is a very real and immediate threat to our community and we must work together to address it. Climate change is causing droughts and flooding, sea level rise and severe storms. Warmer winters brought on by climate change are lengthening the tick season and leading to increased potential for exposure to Lyme disease. Climate change is contributing to increased deer populations and the spread of invasive plant species. I'm concerned that my home, which is close to the Nippon's River Marsh, will flood in the coming years. I worry that more extreme heat will exacerbate asthma experienced by members of my family and I know that many people will be more severely impacted than my family will. I know this problem is too big to be addressed by individuals alone. We must work together to make any meaningful change. The time to act is now. Dozens of municipalities across the state are working on climate action plans. I urge Milton to join them so that together we can meet our state's goals for net zero emissions. I have been impressed and inspired by the dedication and hard work of people in this community to serve on committees and in-town government. I hope we can draw on the many talents of our neighbors to help develop and implement a meaningful climate action plan. Thank you so much for your consideration.
And thank you. Seeing no further hands, let us turn now to agenda item number four for discussion approval. Town Clerk Susan Galvin to discuss the Votes Act, Changes for Local Elections, Including Options for Vote by Mail and In-Person Early Voting. Request for Warren Article to Accept the Provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Four, Section 110A. Let me see if Susan is, Susan, you are recognized. Welcome.
Good evening. How are you? Thank you for having me. Happy New Year to all. So thank you very much for having me attend your meeting. Purpose of me attending is to discuss and provide you with, you know, just a brief update as to the Votes Act and how it affects our local elections. So the Votes Act, although there's many pieces to it, the parts that I'm going to discuss with you folks today are changes in the voter registration deadline. It is now 10 days before the election. It used to be 20 days. It mandates that voting by mail is required for all elections, including our local elections. It makes voting in person and not mandated for local elections, but it is something that the town could opt in provided that the Board of Registrazers or two members of the Board of Registrazers made a recommendation to the Select Board and then subsequently the Select Board take a vote to include voting by mail. I mean, voting in person. I'm sorry about that. So those are the three main topics that I'd like to discuss with, with you folks regarding the vote, the Votes Act. First, vote by mail. As most of you are probably familiar, as we've been using it for many elections now. It provides voters the option to request a ballot to be mailed to them. They don't need an excuse, whereas with absentee, you do need an excuse. And like I said, the Select Board has the, it's required, but the Select Board does have the option to opt out. That if the Select Board did decide to opt out, a vote would have to occur 45 days before our election, which is April 25th, which is a Tuesday. In-person, again, provides the voters with the option to vote in person. Those of you that have taken advantage of in-person voting for some of the primaries and state elections. It is required that we have a scheduled setup. It's conducted here at Town Hall downstairs and it's usually for in a primary or for a local election. It would be a six-day venture and for a state-federal election, it's a 12-day venture. So I'm not coming for, to, to you folks for any, any action on your part unless you so deem fit. I'm not recommending any actions. But I would like to just briefly touch upon the in-person voting. So in-person voting, I think we could do a parallel as to voter turnout for, say, the most recent state primary and our local elections. Typically, our local elections, voter turnout can range anywhere from 12% to at a high, and there's been very few highs, of 45%. So the cost for an in-person voter turnout, I'm, excuse me, in-person early vote is approximately 11,500. That is for staffing. And it's, it, considering the amount of people that took advantage of that, it's pretty staggering. So for state primary, we had out of 20,588 registered voters, 347 voters participate in person. For mail-in, however, we did have 1,826. So to me, it's, it's clear that the bigger draw is the mail-in voting. And that would be something that we would more than likely want to offer to our voters. Rather than me give a list of stats and everything, maybe you folks might have questions or are interested in certain areas that I can provide you with information.
Thanks. So why don't we take them individually? First, addressing the Saturday matter.
Oh, sure. Sure. I can, I can touch upon that too, which is Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 110A. So currently, our town bylaws state that our town elections are on Tuesdays. Being on a Tuesday, if you count back 10 days, any last day to register to vote would fall on a Saturday. The legislation offers this caveat that if the town accepts this, instead of having to be open on a Saturday from the hours of nine to five, we could extend our hours on a Friday and be open a regular course of hours plus extended till five. Thus allowing my staff and myself the time to focus on the weekend preparing for our election. It's additional costs to man in the past because of so many options to, to voters to register. There's automatic voter registration anytime you do anything at Mass Registry, as well as you can register online. We don't see in-person voter registration as a, as a high on that last day to register to vote. As a matter of fact, the last few years, we've maybe had one or two people come in. So to justify having a full complement of staff and we would be limited to working in the office as opposed to preparing for an election, which requires us using our election room and everything. I think it would be more beneficial for us to at least present a town meeting and see if they would be willing to accept this stature and allow for us to change last day to register to vote for town elections to the Friday before.
It seems to make sense to start with this one since this does apply to the upcoming special town meeting warrant and you'll be drafting, as noted earlier, the exact wording for the warrant article, Sue?
Correct. I'm working with the town council.
Right. So why don't we open it for discussion? Any questions? For Madam Clerk? Any comments? We have a proposed motion. I see Mr. Zulus and I see Ms. Musto. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to clarify, on that Saturday, 10 days before, you're working on the election anyway, right? You're, you've got, you've got a lot to do other than
Absolutely. We're, we're in the office. So
But you're doing other thing, you're doing other things.
Correct. So I mean, would we be there? Absolutely would be there, but it would allow us or give us the freedom to, to do the work at hand preparing for the election, for Election Day.
And you'd, you'd take care of that registration with the additional hours on the Friday, right?
Correct.
Thank you, Sue.
Ms. Musto.
Hi, Sue. Just a quick question. First, I think your, your office is doing a terrific job. So I want to thank you for that. Just a quick question on the cost of the mail-in voting and do you have it in your budget to do or will you need to come back for additional funds?
So when, when I was preparing the budget, I did plan for that because there was, although it hadn't been accepted, there was, you know, a great momentum that this was going to take place. So I did plan for it and so I don't anticipate having to come back. But I don't think I will be giving money back at the end of the year, but maybe, you never know.
Thank you.
Always welcomed.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Madam Clerk. How are you? Happy New Year. So my, my only question is, you know, I've been in your office many times, so I understand the operation. What is it that we could do here? This is rarely on you. What could we do to make this easier? Is there, is there a part of this that? I understand the parts that are clearly, the mailing is clearly the way of the future. You know, it's much different than people, as you just articulated, people giving a reason for why they wanted, what if, I, I want to do what was going to make it easier for you and your staff.
So, you know, we've muddled through and I think developed a very good system for mail-in and in-person. So as far as systems, I think we're, we're in a good spot. It's a very labor-intensive process with mail-ins. We have, well, for, for instance, for our town election, we have 10 ballots that we will be sending out and, you know, it requires a very thoughtful approach in, in mailing those out. It can't be just done willy-nilly because you want to ensure that the voters are getting the right ballots, that it's getting to the voters that have requested it and that we're, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So it is very labor-intensive and there's a very short turnaround time. For example, the last day that I can put in for our ballots to be printed is, I believe, like March 26, which is a month before our election. So it takes about a week for the printer to get it back to us. So you're talking about April 6th, thereabouts, that we will be getting the ballots in. Now, now as I said, it's labor-intensive. So if you have, you know, upwards of, and I'm anticipating somewhere around 3,000 people that may request ballots, you have a very short window to get it right and get it out there to those people. So, you know, to get the word out, apply early for those ballots, make a clear decision whether you're going to vote early by mail or whether you're going to go to the ballot, ballot day. That's extremely helpful to us. But, you know, I, I think we're in pretty good shape and I appreciate, you know, the support of all of you folks, you know, y'all at different times pop in and, and ask if there's anything you can do to help and it's greatly appreciated. It goes a long way.
So one quick follow-up on that, on that note, we're going to, I think you're going to need a bigger mailbox in the side of Town Hall.
Yeah.
That's my, from what I've watched of that, I think you're going to need a bigger mailbox than what you have.
It's stronger. I gotta stop lifting weights.
Maybe Mr. Richie's office could help you with that. Thanks very much.
Madam Clerk, if we understand correctly, for Tuesday elections, the voter registration deadline will be on Saturday unless the town accepts Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 41, Section 110A. And your recommendation to the Select Board is that we do so?
Correct.
Okay. That will be the warrant article. So we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, move that we approve them. If I do this right, I may have the wrong thing. I'm reading the wrong one. So I'm not sure I have it. I want to make the motion, quote, link exactly what he said. I want to move to approve that under Section 10A.
Okay.
Put it in additional language.
If I could help, Richard.
Go ahead, Arthur.
What I need for you would be to move to approve the warrant article to accept the provisions of Massachusetts. of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter Forty-One, Section One Ten A.
I just found that that is it. That's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Uh, Sue Smiles?
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well deserved. You did a good job. Now let's go back to the other matter that you have at hand. And that is that the Board of Registitors did not make a recommendation to the Select Board for in-person early voting, correct?
Correct. They are not making a, a recommendation at this time.
So the question is, do we need to support that or will it stand without any action by the Select Board as long as the registrars do not change their current position?
Correct. A- as long as the Board of Registitors, at least two members of the Board of Registitors, do not request of the Select Board to consider voting, to have voting in person, then there is no action necessary for the Select Board.
Thank you. And that is your recommendation?
Correct.
Thank you. Any further follow-up or questions for our town clerk on that topic? I, I'd just like to add a, an addendum. That's a double add. I may say I did this on a voluntary basis once upon a time for you, Sue, and I concur with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Based upon that experience, if it's at all helpful.
So, Mr. Chair, there's no need for us to take any action at this point?
There is none, according to the recommendation of our town clerk.
Thank you.
Susan, thank you for being with us.
Thank you. Always wonderful to see you all.
Nice job.
Hope you have a wonderful New Year.
You too.
Thank you.
Go home.
I, I will.
All right.
Bye-bye.
That is her home address. She lives there so much. We ought to get a quarter board over her door. Home sweet home. She's marvelous, marvelous servant of the community. Item number five, discussion approval wetland replication activity on town-owned land located on Canton Avenue, map K, Block Two, Block One A, related to the Winter Valley Residences Building Six project. And we should have two speakers with us for this item. One is Ned Corcoran, who is representing Winter Valley, and the other is Conservation Commission Chair, John Cannon. Are either of them with us? Here is Mr. Corcoran. And Mr. Corcoran has agreed to give a succinct outline. There'll be one map, although you received much more in the way of material for this, just to walk us through the chronology and get us to where John can then pick up. So Ned, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Happy to be back. Ned Corcoran, representing Winter Valley. I was before you on November first, gave you a preview of the action that we were hoping that you would take tonight. Gave you an overview of the process sitting in front of Winter Valley to go before the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission for two separate approvals relative to the development of Building Six at the upper end of the, of the campus at Winter Valley. As I, as you may recall, the Building Six is being developed on a portion of the property that has an isolated wetland. And it's really going to plop right down on that location. Winter Valley's team worked with Steve Ives, who's the town's conservation agent, to identify appropriate locations for a wetland replication area. It was Mr. Ives's suggestion and our follow-up that we proposed replicating on town-owned property next to a wetland on that property, immediately next to the site entry from Canton Avenue. We went before, we laid it out to you, as I said, on November one. I know one of the concerns that was raised that evening was whether the town engineer had an opportunity to review and approve the work. We spent significant amount of time with Marina Fernandez and Chase Berkeley and received a, a memo blessing this project as an improvement for the, to, for the town to enhance water quality, stormwater management, flood storage associated with, with, with stormwater that comes off of Canton Avenue as well as off of the Winter Valley site. We went, we started a hearing with the Planning Board on December eight. It was continued to December twenty-one. Planning Board voted to approve site plan approval. Condition of that was that the developer, the Winter Valley, would maintain that this wetland area on behalf of the town in perpetuity, in accordance with the approvals given. We went before the Conservation Commission on December fourteen. There was a site, a joint, excuse me, December eighth, it was a joint sidewalk of both the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission on Saturday morning, December ten. And we went back before the Conservation Commission last Wednesday evening, December twenty-one. And the Conservation Commission voted to issue an order of conditions approving the wetland replication area as an appropriate mitigation for the impacts to the wetlands on the site. And so we're back before this board with a request to approve a memorandum of agreement between Winter Valley and the, and the Select Board. As the owner entity of the, the Select Board owns the property. It's a, it's a, the property is in the name of the Select Board and owns it on behalf of the town. We, the request, essentially a simple form of a license to allow our contractor to go onto the town's property to construct the wetland replication area and to perform maintenance in the future and enter into a simple memorandum, memorandum of agreement acknowledging that. I provided Nick Milano and Kevin Freitag a draft of an, of a simple MOU this morning. I know that Kevin was reviewing it. And with that, I'll stop and open it to questions, comments from the board.
Oh, if I may, Mr. Corcoran, could we put up that one map that would show the complex position where Building Six is going to be located? And where the wetland replication on town property would be located?
If I can share my screen and show it, or unless Nick has access to it, I did forward it to Nick earlier. Whatever's easier.
You can go ahead and share, Ned. Thank you.
Y'all see that?
Not yet. Here we go.
Okay. Minimize this. Okay, so Winter Valley, as, as you all know, is, is catty corner, really, to Town Hall. Across this, across Canton Avenue and just down the street, there's a twenty-four and a half acre parcel that fronts on Canton Avenue with the main entry in from Canton Avenue. Also has frontage on Highland Street. There are five residential buildings currently on the site. And Winter Valley hosts and provides affordable senior and housing for seniors and persons with disabilities currently for a hundred and, with a hundred and sixty units. Zoning was enacted, was modified in May of twenty twenty-one, authorized the development of Building Six, which would add an additional thirty-six affordable units. Building Five is located here on the site. Building Six would go here. There's a further area, there's about four acres in the rear that will remain undeveloped. But Building Six would go here. And there is a wetland right in the middle of where that building would go. The idea was to move the, move a, a wetland and develop here. I have one other slide I'll quickly show. This is the town-owned property at the corner of Highland and Canton Avenue. This is the site driveway into the site. This is an existing wetland, touches a little bit onto the, the Winter Valley property, but it's substantially all of the wetland is located on the town's property. The plan is to develop an additional wetland area right here that would receive runoff from Canton Avenue from the, the Winter Valley site. Treat it before it got into this wetland, would improve water quality. And as, as this area discharges down through Wendell Park to Pine Tree Brook. It was, it was, as I said, it was recommended by Steve Ives, the town's conservation agent. It was approved by the town engineer and DPW director and approved both by the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission through the hearing processes that took place with both boards in the last couple of months. And so we would, we request that this, that this board approve, authorize the work to be done that was, that was approved by the Conservation Commission and approve the work to be done in accordance with the conditions that were laid out in that order of conditions approved by the Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any board members from Mr. Corcoran before we go to Mr. Keenan? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ned, just to confirm, this isn't going to increase the discharge down into the Wendell Park areas?
No, it, there's all, all of, all of the drainage that comes off of here now discharges ultimately into that Wendell Park. What it will do is it will capture it and hold it better. It will provide better flood storage in this area. It will also improve the quality of the water that flows into the town's wetland because it'll be captured and cleaned before it goes in, and that will enhance water quality as it goes through Wendell Park and down to Pine Tree Brook.
Thank you, Ned.
So you know other questions? Mr. Cannon, welcome. And can we turn to you, please?
Oh, yes, indeed. Thank you very much. And I can state... I can state...
Do you want to keep the map up, John, for a while, or...?
Sure. Why don't you keep it up for a moment? Because I only need to make two points. Ned has given a very articulate and thorough presentation of the background and the significance of this request to the Select Board. I'd like to emphasize two points. One is that by taking a portion of an isolated wet, wetland further away from Canton Avenue where the Building Six is going to be located, the applicant, which is Winter Valley, had to replicate the wetlands anyway. And we were acutely aware of that fact. The reason that we saw an incremental benefit here to placing the replication here is because there is a dire need to clean that water. And the wetland acts like a sponge. It, it filters the water. And that needed to be done, which is the second point. And that is about four to five years ago, the Conservation Commission approved the town's application upon receipt of a state grant to put filter trees on Wendell Park. The reason for putting them on Wendell Park was to essentially clean the street runoff because that the, the stream that goes down the center of Wendell Park was, was high in E. coli. So when we looked at it, we said, well, that's really interesting because we're going to clean what's on the street. But how far back upstream does that E. coli go? And at the time, the, the presenter was Hillary Wade from the, the environmental coordinator. Said, well, actually, it's on the other side of Canton Avenue, which is exactly where we're looking. That needs to have treatment right there. So this is perhaps serendipity and perhaps a good thinking of Steve Ives and with the support of the Winter Valley folks to put the replication area here. So we asked, what's the cost of simply replicating the wetland, which you have to do anyway? And it's about half the price of putting the, the wetland replication here. Because it's not just a replication, but it's a restoration of some of that area that's shown as blue hatching. It's approximately ninety-four thousand dollars for the applicant to restore and to replicate the wetland. It would be approximately half that elsewhere. So the town gets that benefit that is essentially being funded in part by the applicant. So that's what got the support of the Conservation Commission. It's an appropriate program. It's in the right place. It does the right thing. It helps clean the, the contaminated water. And when I say contaminated, it's not terribly high, but it's, it's higher than it should be. But this is the right thing to do at the right time. So it has the full support of the Conservation Commission. And we'd ask the Select Board to facilitate the granting of the license, I guess, to allow us to move for, and they say us, the town, six hundred Canton Avenue, Winter Valley, the Conservation Commission, the Planning Board, to allow us to go forward with, we think it's a, it's a good remedy for the situation. So we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there any questions for Mr. Cannon? Seeing none.
I have one.
Mr. Wells, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair Cannon, it's always a, is one who understands a little bit of history about this town. It's always very informative when the chair of the Conservation Commission comes in here and articulates something that most people in this town have no clue or understanding of. So your, your description of this clearly to the layperson makes it very understandable. And, Mr. Chair, I'm ready to make a motion if that's okay with you. You all right with that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I move to approve the wetland. I just got my glasses. All right, we're back into this. I move to approve the wetland replication activity on town-owned land located on Canton Avenue, map K, Block Two, Block One A is an alpha, related to the Winter Valley Residences Building Six project, and request town council to draft legal agreements relative to this work and authorize the town administrator sign on behalf of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It is moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Zulus, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on, on the, the time sensitivity of this. The, the only issue I have with the motion is, is authorizing the town administration, town administrator to sign what I, 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 I think what I hear is to be a license and a memorandum of agreement. And since we haven't seen drafts of those, I would, I would like to see drafts of those, at least before authorizing the signing. If there's, if we have the time to, to maybe see the drafts and, and approve them and comment on them prior to our, our next meeting. So I guess the question for Mr. Corcoran and Mr. Keenan and perhaps Mr. Milano is, is that, is, would we have the opportunity to see the license and the memorandum of agreement prior to our next meeting and perhaps vote on them at the next meeting? I think the rest of the motion is fine. It's just, since we haven't seen the drafts, I'm a little hesitant to authorize the signing without having seen any of the drafts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If, if I may, the answer to the question depends on when your next meeting is. The, would the, we have a deadline for application for fu- funding to HUD. The, the application has to be submitted by January, by January twenty. We know that the Planning Board's site plan approval decision becomes final on January seventeen. And we know that the order of conditions becomes final somewhere around January tenth. So we would have until, I think, the, the eighteenth to wrap this piece of it up. So my, my understanding is that you're meeting on the eighteenth. If that is in fact the next meeting, if, if, we certainly would have time to get the agreement approved and signed as part of the package that would get submitted to HUD on the twentieth.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, is related to Chair Cannon. John, do you think this, is there anything there that? Why aren't you not to have us vote this motion tonight? Is there anything that could come out of this and the, the license? I mean, this is really a formality for us, but really the subject matter expert to me, and this is you, you're coming.
Uh, no, there's, there's nothing that I can think of that would, uh, stop that. I, I defer to Kevin Freitag on that issue. But, uh, my view is that it, it could be voted on, uh, uh, subject to the approval of, of the select board to the, the actual language of the license.
Would you be happy with that? Michael, could you accept that or?
Ab- absolutely, absolutely. Uh, you know, if we, if we, if we say, uh, the whole motion as, as, as you noted it, and then, and then strike that last piece off, authorizing the town administrator's sign, and then just say, subject to approval by the select board of the final agreements, and then we approve, at least we have a chance to look at them, then we approve them on the eighteenth. I think, uh, if that works for everyone, I think that'd be fine. I'd just like to get a chance to take a look at the license and the memorandum of agreement once we have a draft. That's all.
So I'll amend that, Chair, to su- to, I'll just add to my motion, subject to, uh, final review by the board on January eighteenth. How's that?
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Ms. Musto, is that agreeable to you?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Any further comment by any members of the board? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you all very much. And, uh, it's great to have you with us, John, and had, uh, excellent presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Uh, good night and happy new year.
Thank you. Happy new year.
I'll return at this point in time to agenda item number six, discussion approval. Special town meeting, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This will be the approval of the warrant articles. Identified as number one is accept the provisions of Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-one, section, uh, ten A, and that has been accomplished. Second is select board change treasurer collector position from elected to appointed pursuant to Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-one, section one B. Mr. Milano, could I turn to you for this, please?
Sure. Um, so, excuse me, we've drafted a, um, an article that has been shared with town council for review. It was in your packet. So as you alluded, um, the article would be to ask town meeting to accept, to vote, um, to change the treasurer position from elected to appointed in accordance with this law, um, chapter forty-one, one B. Um, if it is approved by the special town meeting, it would then be placed on the ballot for the annual town election to be voted, um, at, on that day. Um, and then there are a couple of possible outcomes, which we discussed at the last meeting. But just to reiterate, um, obviously one outcome is that special town meeting won't approve it, in which case it won't appear on the ballot. Now, the eventuality is that the special town meeting does approve it, it goes on the ballot, but the question is not approved. In that case, a candidate who is elected treasurer at the town election would be elected treasurer and would serve a full term. If special town meeting does approve it, it goes on the ballot and is approved at the annual town election by voters. Um, and a candidate is elected that day, um, the elected treasurer would serve until a permanent treasurer is appointed uh, by the appointing authority, which would be the town administrator as it is for others, um, other department heads here in Milton. Um, so those are the possible outcomes here. Um, the last thing I wanted to mention was that I, I pulled some data from the Division of Local Services just in preparation for meeting and discussing with the warrant committee. Um, and refreshing some of the data that the town had used, um, when it was discussed back in twenty eighteen. Forty-seven cities and towns in Massachusetts have elected treasurers, um, out of three hundred and fifty-one. Um, fifteen municipalities that have a population greater than ten thousand, um, have elected treasurers, and that is out of a hundred and eighty municipalities, fifteen have elected. Of those fifteen, it's actually kind of interesting, just doing some research, um, that three others are marching along pretty much on the same path as us. Um, Holyoke City is considering, um, a valid question to go from elected to appointed. The town of Ludlow has a special town meeting, um, next week to take up this question. And the town of Belmont is doing likewise at the end of the month. So it's certainly a trend in municipal governance, um, shifting from elected to appointed. Um, so I just wanted to provide that background. As I noted at the beginning, uh, we drafted an, an article. It's in your packets and we provided it to, um, the town council for review. You approve it tonight, we'll have him finalize that and, um, transmit it over to the warrant committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Milano. The floor is open. Mr. Zulus, you recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll make the motion to approve a warrant article to change the treasurer collector position from elected to appointed pursuant to MGL, chapter forty-one, section one B.
Is there a second to Mr. Zulus' motion?
I will. I'll second that.
Ms. Musto? I'm sorry, uh, your hand was raised, uh, Mr. Wells. Was that a second that you intended?
It was, but Ms. Musto has it. That's fine. Sorry, Roxanne. I, I thought I didn't realize.
Sorry.
It is moved and seconded beneath the discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Move on to the next item, and this is purchase of front pond convent located at nine thirty Brook Road, Milton, Massachusetts. And, uh, Mr. Milano, can we turn to you again, please?
Sure. Um, so again, we've drafted a warrant article, uh, related to this based on, um, the town's past land acquisition articles. I, I'll note that, um, we are certainly in the early stages of this process. Um, but we're, we're taking a warrant article that's been used previously, um, and will continue to, to update it as needed. Um, as we progress towards the town meeting, um, the warrant article would authorize the, the select board to purchase the property, um, in accordance to a purchase and sale agreement that will be, um, negotiated, uh, by the town and the Congressations of the Sisters of St. Joseph, assuming we can get to terms with them. Um, I'll also note in terms of the purchase price, since that is being negotiated, um, the intention is for the town to have, um, to fund it, to fund the purchase by borrowing, uh, by issuing debt, which would then be paid by a debt exclusion, which will cr- trigger a ballot question. So the recommendation that the warrant committee would formulate would, um, likely include a reference to a debt exclusion, um, as part of this process. So it'd be a two-step process, um, kind of similar to the treasurer question, which would be town meeting would need to approve it by two-thirds. Um, it would then go to, um, the ballot for approval as a debt exclusion, which would allow the town to, um, temporarily increase taxes on homeowners to pay for the debt service for the purchase. Which, as, uh, the property was listed at eight million dollars, eight and a half million dollars, excuse me. And we've received a proposal from the Congressation of Sisters St. Joseph to sell the top, to the, sell the convent and its property to the town. And the select board is currently engaged in negotiations on that price.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Mr. Wells, you recognize?
So two points, two questions. Um, one is, um, you have some flexibility there in, in your negotiating on the dollar figure? Both up or down? My ten, my gut is it would tend to have, maybe perhaps have to go up, but, um, I know that you're not alone in this. And my second point is, on the debt exclusion vote, I thought, I thought that sh- Mr. Sean had said when he came in, he wanted to wait until, if we're able to acquire this, package the entire school project and go for one debt exclusion vote versus two. And either you might, maybe, I know Mike Zulus is on the committees, or maybe one of you can, can address that.
Sure. So just to, um, do a distinction here. So any, let's say the purchase price is what the sisters.
Right.
Which is eight and a half million dollars. For the town to purchase it and fund that purchase, we certainly don't have that money available to buy it outright. So we'd have to issue debt to do so. And even on a, if we extended that out to a thirty-year term on a bond, we're talking about an increase on our debt service of upwards of half a million dollars at today's interest rates, probably closer to six hundred thousand dollars. So it's not, uh, purchased that the town could have funded through its regular budget because of that, um, significant increase in debt service. So if the town were to purchase it, it would need, from our perspective, need to be a debt exclusion. So that would be step one is buy it, borrow the money, have it be a debt exclusion. Um, and we're paying that out over twenty years, thirty years. Step two would be design, um, the project and, and when it comes time to do the actual work, have that be done as a debt exclusion at a later date. So we're just talking about here is the purchase itself. Any design or actual construction would require future town meeting approval, um, and likely future debt exclusion approval as well. Um, Mr. Zulus, feel free to.
I see, I see. No, I got it. I see Mike. No, I just said, I'm, I'm just thinking more strategically here that I think we want to be as out front, you know, open and outspoken, out, um, articulate as much of this as we can. Because I think for all of us, we want us to succeed in, in the most efficient manners. And Mike, you can weigh in anyone. That, that, that the only reason I even asked the question, that was why I asked.
If, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
Uh, yeah, no, I, I think you're right, Richard, uh, in, in the way you, in the way you pose it. But the reality is we're not in a position, uh, to know the figure for design and construction. And we won't know that, we, we won't be in a position to know that for quite some time. There's going to have to be a lot of analysis done of the property and the building in order to come up with a design and construction plan and number, other than just a kind of a general, uh, idea about it. Uh, and so, and if we wait that long to try to come up with that, we'll probably lose out on the property. So that really necessitates going through the two-stage process that Nick, uh, that Nick, uh, described.
But we're talking about this being on this April's ballot then, correct?
I believe so. I believe so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Nick. I just wanted to, um, Michael's description to the time may, I understand it now. Fine, that's, I'll find that. Thank you. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question. Do we, based on the purchase price, um, that they're trying to sell it for, do we have an idea what that means per household, just on that, without doing any renovation?
It's part of the work that we'll do, um, are obviously in preparing for the meeting, um, preparing for warrant committee deliberations. We've already received some questions about that related. So, um, based on, we already have some preliminary debt schedules that will enable us to create that number and share that with folks to give folks a range of what the anticipated increase related to this would be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments by board members? We do have a related motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, to, um, okay, where are we here? Do we have a motion on this?
Yes.
What number is it?
Uh, it's under, um, item number six. Uh, Mike, do you have it handy to help, Richard?
No, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna read out, I'm just reading on the item six, what I have, which is, um, I'm gonna move to approve the purchase of front pond convent located at nine thirty Brook Road, Milton. There's more to that. If anyone can add on.
You found it. Uh, Mr. Zulus?
Uh, yeah, I just, just to, just to supplement, I think it's to approve the warrant article to purchase.
Okay, the warrant article, yeah, okay. To approve the warrant article.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Zulus, was that an explicit second?
I'll, I'll make it explicit and second, explicit.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. Uh, the next sub-item that we have is residential outdoor lighting bylaw. Ms. Bradley has been working on this for some time. Uh, can we turn to you, Aaron, for an update, please?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much. Um, so I've been working with our town attorney, Mr. Freitag, about this and trying to determine, um, if it should be a town bylaw or if it should be a zoning bylaw. And we were, he was, not we, he was looking into, um, whether or not the attorney general's office had any guidelines on this. To which he did find some, um, pertaining to other cities and towns and commonwealth and their, uh, their determinations. What we were doing was trying to make sure that, um, that the guidelines were wide enough so that they would encapsure, um, some of the, the, uh, lighting concerns that are currently being raised by many of our town residents. Um, and we believe that, uh, by making it a zoning bylaw, it will in fact encompass that. So, so what we are planning now is to withdraw it for the special town meeting. Um, it will go to the planning board and go through the zoning, uh, zoning process, bylaw process. I believe Mr. Zawinski, um, is already aware of this. Mr. Freitag has had conversations with him, and I will follow up later this week with him regarding that. Um, and so we're looking forward to having it be on the May town meeting. I did say to Mr. Freitag that we wanted to make sure that, um, if this was passed at the May town meeting, that it would be implemented as soon as possible, as there are many residents that have contacted me about their concerns, that this keeps being pushed off. Um, and so the, um, I, I will assure them that if this gets passed in May, that we just need to wait for the attorney general's office to sign off on it, and then it will be implemented immediately. And we will, um, begin to take action on, on this new bylaw. So hopefully it will be passed on, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Did you want to invite any comments from, uh, Mr. Freitag on this?
If he would like to, yes. I would love to have a comment from him if he would like to, but he, I, yeah, whatever he would.
It's all right. So. All right. Kevin is unmuted himself, so he does want to make a comment.
No, only, good evening, Mr. Chair, only to say that I have nothing else to add to my, uh, memorandum.
That's common, possible, isn't it? Thank you both. Thank you very much. We look forward to this for the annual town meeting. Our next matter of business under this item is the closure of the warrant, and we have a motion to that effect. Does somebody wish to move that motion?
Make a motion, close the warrant.
The special time meeting scheduled for Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there a second to Mr. Wells' motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion or comment? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, which is a discussion of the, of select board articles for the annual town meeting that to be held in the month of, of May. Um, and this is just to see, um, at this time, and we may carry it forward for our, our next, um, meeting, is whether or not there might be, um, any articles on anybody's mind, uh, beyond those that are annually recurring articles. And maybe, Nick, I don't know if you have it handy, um, the schedule for, uh, the annual town meeting. That's something you could refresh everyone on.
Uh, well, I think the, the, I don't have it in front of me, but I can pull it, but the main date that I should be in everybody's mind is that the warrant is scheduled to close on January eleventh, which is next Wednesday at the end of business. Um, when town hall closes at five P. M. So that's, the warrant for the annual town meeting closes, uh, Wednesday, January eleventh at five P. M.
Thank you for that. Anything, anybody else has? We'll turn to item number eight. Uh, we have a no place for hate proclamation to be read Monday, January sixteenth. Uh, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior. Um, it was in your materials.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the no place for hate. I move to, to approve the no place for hate proclamation on Dr. Martin Luther King Junior for January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. It's moved and seconded. Any discussion or comment? Seeing none, roll call vote. Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. At this time, we turn to agenda item number nine, which is a discussion and an update on the annual shelter of progress report on the site. And, um, Mr. Milano, we will call on, uh, our director of, of planning and. Our Director of, of Planning and Community Development, will we not?
Sure, Mr. Zawinski is here to provide a brief update. And he is joining us now. And, um, and I know Mr. Wells will, um, pick up the conversation after Tim, thank you.
Great.
Uh, hi, everybody, can you hear me?
Tim, we can, thank you for joining us.
Uh, I, I thank you for having me, Mr. Chair. Um, again, my name is Tim Zawinski, I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. Um, and I, I also staff the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. Um, the, the most recent, uh, action that the select board has taken, um, on this project, I, I, I believe was the approval of a contract with our new, uh, project manager. Um, Hill International, um, that was a firm that was recommended. By our Animal Shelter Advisory Committee after a, um, RF, RFQ process, um, Hill is, uh, a very reputable firm. Um, they have experience with both animal shelter projects, managing the, the Quincy project that's going on right across the border. Um, and also projects with, um, that, that use modular construction, um, which, as, as everyone hopefully is. Uh, familiar with is, is a construction method that the advisory committee, uh, decided to pursue after. We went out to bid for general contractor bids last, oh God, December of twenty-one. Um, and those bids came back, uh, just significantly above, uh, any, any reasonable budget. Um, so the committee's been hard at work trying to figure out ways to, um. You know, to trim the cost of this project. Um, modular construction is one means of doing that, um, and, and, and bringing on a new project manager with. Um, with, with the sort of expertise to facilitate that has been important. Um, town meeting at, um, at the annual town meeting in two thousand and twenty-two approved, uh, capital funding, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars. To do site work, um, at the animal shelter site, which is, um, at the end of the, uh, dump access road. Um, a-again, as, as folks are probably familiar with, being a former quarry, um, it is a ledge-heavy, uh, site, um, and we. Uh, as a committee suspected that, um, uh, a, a major driver of, of those bids that came in very high. Uh, with site work costs, and so, um, the town stepping up and, and providing that funding to, uh, cover what we hope will be. Um, most, if not all, of the site work costs, um, i- is again going to, um, you know, drive the other costs of that, that project down. Um, and, and the other thing that we've been working on is, um, it, it really trying to, um. Maximize the efficiency of the program of the building. Um, when we first started off this process. We were talking about a five thousand or up to a fifty-one hundred square foot building. Uh, working with the advisory committee and the Milton Animal League, which is, um, ultimately the, the funder of this project. Um, we've been able to get down to around a forty-one hundred square foot building. Um, which, you know, every square foot counts when, when you're trying to reduce construction costs in this way, so. Um, Hill International, our project manager, is in the process of developing, um, an R F, an R F P for, um, for modular contractors. Um, we're hoping to have that finalized this month, ready to go out on the street, um, end of January, early February. And, um, you know, to be able to get those bids in to, to see if we can, uh, get a project that's within the budget that we have. Um, uh, for the project, so, um, that's the update for now. Um, the, there's, there's going to be a future, um, agenda item, hopefully, um, with some housekeeping, uh, measures that we need to take with our architect. Um, just amending our contract with RFA, um, Roush Friedenfeld Associates, uh, which has been our project architect from the beginning. Um, just to sort of get their contract in line with the, the modular nature of the construction process, so. Um, it's a slight preview of coming attractions, and then, um, you know, the next big step will be, um, you know, approving that R F P when it's ready to go, so. Um, that's what I've got for now.
Uh, one question, uh, Tim, do you have any idea when that additional information will be forthcoming?
Um, so we have, I've been working with town council and with, um, RFA on that contract amendment. Um, and it's really just a matter of the advisory committee, uh, reviewing it and, and taking a vote, so, um, that'll hopefully happen next week. And that'll be ready to go for, for your next scheduled meeting.
January eighteenth, okay, so we'll have it on that agenda, thank you. Any questions of Mrs. Zawinski before we turn to Mr. Wells? Again, thank you, Tim. Uh, Richard, do you recognize?
We left out half the story. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, for full disclosure, you know, this has been a project that has languished for. Ten years, Tim, at least ten years, I think that.
Eight generously.
Eight, it, it started as a, well, million-dollar product, one point five, two, two and a half, three, three point five, and a little bit came in, five point nine. So. Um. For full disclosure and, and, and from an ethics point of view, I actually reached out to the Ethics Commission this week because I'm not even sure what I would disclose here because. I, I am one of the trustees who was of the Copa Foundation, was one of the significant donors. But this is a grant that was voted eight years ago, which is three years before I ever joined the board. But that's never happened because they've never gotten anywhere, except that the price has gone up and gone up. Um, ironically, a few, about a month ago, Nick, when did we first talk? How, I don't even know how long you've been, about a month ago, I. Received communication from a member of the Milton Animal. And it, it involved a presentation that had been given to the, to our, to the committee that. Mr. Zawinski staffs over a year ago, about a proposal from the Animal League. To remove the town from this process completely, because one of the issues that drives the cost, and this is not so much the site, is that. As long as it's a town project, thirty B is involved, and it just mounts and mounts and mounts, and I truly, and. If there's anyone who wants to disagree with me, and I've talked to everyone from committee members now to former project manager to Tim, to Nick, Mike Denny. Um, if anyone thinks it's going to come in less than five million dollars, then as a town project, then they're dreaming, but. You can keep talking about it. In the meantime, we have an animal shelter that's sat in its current location for forty-four years. That a good tennis, and I, my members and colleagues, and I, I think, I don't know if you've gone yet, Nick, I asked you a month ago, like, you need to go and see this. Because to say I wouldn't put my dog there is, is really an understatement, and it's no fault of them, it's what, what we have left them working. But the proposal from the Animal League, there are two new leaders in the Animal League that I, I consider very, I only have talked to one of them. They're very bright, one is, is, um, Mity Datalov, who for the past eight years has been Governor Baker's number two Deputy Chief of Staff. A very well-versed person in operational aspects of getting things down the municipal world. The second is Susie, and Philip's was an attorney with Mitslev. Those two have been kind of taken, um, what has been floundering and started to move it forward, and their proposal, which. Went to the committee a year ago to be forwarded to us, and it was from her phone call, asked me what I thought of it, I'm like, we never saw this proposal, never made it. Was that, um. The top, that they. Build the new site on the existing site. And I think, Nick, you've seen, I think we have copies of just a, a historical thing and a little bit of proposal, is that. What they would propose to do is take the town out of it completely. Um, take an acre of the land at the existing site. And donate it to the Milton Animal League, take our seven hundred thousand dollars out of it and let them build it as a nonprofit entity. In turn, take, we're four point seven acres, how much do we have on, uh, the dump road, Nick? Um, Tim, is it four point seven acres? Take the four point seven acres off of the dump road where the animal shelter has wound up. And make that, convert that to an affordable housing project to be put forth managed in R F P by the town. One of the things that, when they said that to me, that kind of just hearing it, knowing what we're doing here is that we've got one proposal coming for that road already. Now here's a second one that would automatically have access, and it would also, second, would be a project that the town could develop an R F P for. The third thing is that historically, you know, that the A G's office has not. Said yes to anything in there, but the one thing that I found, and I think I sent this to you, to you, Nick, going back to nineteen eighty. That they approved that animal shelter on that site, and it's actually listed, as I showed to you, Nick. On the, is part of the entity of. That four acres, the county sits there, part of the government store, four acres of the wood. So, I'm, I'm not going to talk anymore about it at this point, but what I've asked Arthur and Nick is that on the, are we going to do this on the tenth office to have them come and present this to us? And listen to their silence, because I really do believe, and, and no disrespect to Tim, and Tim, you would have heard this from Bill Clark. If we continue on the existing town path that we're going on with the town building this, this is never going to happen, and then if. The building falls down, it is, as it is probably going to do in sometime not too distant future, the winters we're having. We're then going to be really, really in a bind, so, um. That's a lot, that's a lot of it there, but the, they ask, their proposal makes a lot of sense, they've done a lot of homework with it. Um, they've been to D C A M, I believe the mayor of, she already talked to the Attorney General's Office. Um, I think probably the smartest thing for us to do is to have them come before us on the tenth and listen to, um, how they view this as far as moving forward. So they surmise it all right there, uh, Nick? A- and, and just for the record, Mr. Zawinski is fully aware of this, he's met with them, he didn't tell us this tonight, but everything that I just said, he has heard as well.
Um, Mr. Wells, a question, if I may, as we proceed, um. Have, has this been presented to the Animal Shelter Committee?
They are with you, those two, uh, members of the, oh, you mean, uh, uh, that's what I'm saying, this proposal that we got, that memo. Was the Animals Advisory Committee a year ago. To be given to us, and my first communication with her, I did not know this woman. Uh, my first communication with her was, if we had, I haven't seen it, I'm like, seen what? And then when I looked at it and thought about it, I think, Nick, you were the first person I called to write it by.
Yes, the questions for, uh, Mr. Zulus and Mr. Zawinski on this topic. Ms. Bradley?
Mr. Wells, you kept saying they and them multiple times, who are they and them?
So they would be the. Mostly I was referring to the members of the Milton Animal League, now, and just.
So not the attorneys?
No, no.
So this has nothing to do with the attorneys?
Nope. This came directly from them, and, um, although Kevin is aware of it, I do believe, Nick, we did send this, Kevin Freitag does have this, he's aware of it. Um, that was one of the first things I said was that we should send this, let him hear this, see what he thought of it.
And by this, you mean that one sheet of paper that we received in our pocket?
But I think if you listen to them, which is why I asked Arthur to put them on the tenth, listen to their proposal, I think it makes a.
But we don't have their proposal in the pocket, all we have is that one-page document, correct?
Yes, yes, I've never seen it, I've never seen it. I did talk to one of the members, as you know, I, I did talk to one of the members of the Animal Committee, I thought it was the chair, but he's not the chair, one of the long-term members. Um, and he, he likes the idea, he, he found, found to be a very valuable idea. So. It's definitely something, um, both strategically and legally, I think, that warrants us looking at. It would be one acre of existing four, which would be, it would go in where the existing shelter is. And then the remainder of the four acres could still be, could still rehab the houses that are there. But I, I, I've seen nothing now in not just my time on this board, but in. More than eight years, Tim, it's probably was three years leading up to the eight years that it started. For the board, recollection, this board took a vote probably around two thousand and nine to erect a brand-new animal shelter in the existing D P W on six twenty-nine, you know, that. And that project sat there until where it was going to be tied until the multi-sale took place, and that's how it's changed locations.
We have this, uh, as an item to be added to the Governor Stotin meeting that will be forthcoming on January tenth, as you referenced. And, um. I wanted to, uh, s-see if we could ask Mr. Freitag if there was anything that he recommends. That be added for consideration at this time, and then I'll turn to Mr. Zawinski. Kevin, you heard the, uh, thank you for me joining us, you heard the references to the legal. Relationship here, and I wondered if you had any, uh, comments or advice in that regard at this time. If it's too.
No, I don't, if there is a, a written proposal, um, that is to be presented at the select board at its, if, if. At its next meeting, if that's what the select board decides to do, if I could get a copy of that before the meeting, I'd be happy to review it and then provide any comments I had at the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
Awesome, right, so just one question for Kevin, when we did talk, Kevin, we talked about, one of the things that Kevin and I had talked about was. How did the, what happened, you know, what was the. Agreement that allowed the town to build the animal shelter there in nineteen eighty? In what documentation, and I, did you receive that historical? Document there, and, and I don't know who authored that, do you? Do you have any idea who authored that? Or had you ever seen that before?
I had never seen it before, I do not know who authored it.
I mean, it definitely looks like something that was. Drawn by an attorney, it's, it's a, it's a legal, but, but one of the key things that I noticed in it is, going into the diagram. Um, it looks like it was something down around, down around that time in nineteen eighty, it, it notes nineteen eighty, the addition of the animal shelter. But you can see when you blow it up, and it's actually drawn in on the map of the four acres of the government store.
Yeah, I've taken a look at the document a couple of times, it, it, one of the things it talks about is that before nineteen eighty, there was a dog pound that was in one of the buildings up there. And then in nineteen eighty, the dog pound was relocated either within one of the buildings or to a separate building and renamed the Milton Animal Shelter. That seems to be the, the most that I can glean from that document regarding the existence of the animal shelter at that location, it's unclear to me. At least at this point, how long that dog pound was in existence at that location before nineteen eighty?
So the building that it's in now was built in nineteen eighty, that I know. The building that it was in prior to that was in the basement of the barn that no longer exists, that collapsed. So the question, one of the questions that Kevin and I talked about was. What was the process that got the Attorney General in nineteen eighty-two months? And that's how I found, that, that's how I got that document.
I think one of the things you and I discussed too, uh, Richard, was, um. Is there any document that we have that evidences Attorney General's Office ever having approved of the. The dog pound or the animal shelter at that location, and I haven't seen that yet either.
Right, and that's something we're going to have to look for in our records, because if it is, it's in that vault, Nick, it wouldn't, that's how far back it goes, it's, you're talking forty-four years.
And I don't know if everybody on the select board has the document that's being referenced, it's a rather lengthy history. There's, there's a lengthy history and there's an abbreviated history, uh, for Governor Stotin property, um. Does this sound familiar to everybody?
I don't know if, uh, uh, the members have seen it, I can tell by, no, they're definitely not, and I, I just.
Can we get that on to everybody, please?
Yes, and I actually, um, just today, I, I found a, uh, high, higher quality version, um, so I, I can distribute that today, it's just, uh. It's essentially the inventory form of the animal shelter property, um, so it's, it's something that would have been prepared if somebody was submitting it to the National Register of Historic Places, so. Um, I, I just was able to come across it today, it was dated as a seed of the Historical Commission in oh-nine. Um, so it's just inventoring wh-what was there, um, at the time and, and providing some history, um, in context, so. I was planning to include it as part of the package for the trustees next week, um, well, I'll distribute it separately, um, tonight or tomorrow, and then include it as well in the package for next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just one more point, Nick, I, I, I do think it might be proved to take a look on that vault. There has to be some file somewhere there. I mean, we've got forty-four years of history, bills, improvements, changes, a- as I said to, to Kevin, and that's only from my own memory, as a kid, it was in the basement of the barn first, and Sergeant George Dillon, who was the first animal control officer, actually moved his family into the main house. So he kinda did, too, he was a full-time police officer and a part-time mental control officer, but the the shelter was in the basement of that barn before we erected the building where it currently is, it's sat for forty-four years. But there has to be something in there, Kevin's right, I just, um, I think going back into John, it was John Cronin who negotiated it. And Bob O'Leary was town council, there has to be something in there. I think it'll make Kevin's travel a lot easier in this, as I can tell by looking at his face.
Hey, so Tim Zawinski's hand up a moment ago, and then yours, Aaron, uh, Tim?
Do you have any comment, did you want to make it this time?
Yeah, I, I just wanted, I, I've been kind of going through, because, uh, so, um, Middy Darbaloff and, and Susan Phillips have, have been involved in, um, in, in, well, it's not recent anymore, they've been coming for, for at least a year, and, and Susan is actually now a member of the Advisory Committee. But, but have, have discussed this alternative plan at a meeting, I don't recall any presentation materials, I'm just going through my inbox, I don't have anything. I do have an email exchange that Katie Conlon and Linda Collins were, um, were involved in. Obviously now former select board members, so, um, you know, in terms of, you know, that proposal not getting to the select board. It's, you know, maybe not through formal channels. But, but, you know, one thing, and, and as, as trustees of the Governor Stotin Trust, you, you'll all probably have a, a very detailed discussion about this next week, but you know, th- these are issues that we talked about, you know, in, in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen during the site selection process, and and my understanding, you know, from the very beginning has been, you know, relative to the, the public nature of the project, that because the animal control officer is required to have a facility that w- we couldn't just, you know, because this is an idea that's been floating around for quite some time, that if, you know, the Animal League or, or someone else could build you know, a, a, a shelter and then gift it to the town to fill that public purpose. My understanding from discussions with town council at the time was that that would be seen as an end around around thirty B and that we would need to go through a public procurement process. You know, and, and, and the other thing relative to the Governor Stotin site is, is again, that, you know, and, and, and you all are, are in the thick of it and have been for a long time, that the, the, the mission of the Governor Stotin Trust would prevent a, a non-poor of Milton related use on the site. And so this is, these are all discussions that went on during the site selection process, when, when the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee was first, um, you know, assembled back in, in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So, w- w- which is not to say that there's not a possibility or even, um, you know, wisdom in, in, in pursuing the Governor Stotin site. I just wanted to sort of explain kind of why the committee has been continuing to focus on the dump access road site. You know, it's i- it's, it's not an ideal site from a physical standpoint, um, but at the time when it was selected, it was the best option that had a, a realistic and feasible chance of, of not being tied up in, in kind of legal considerations for, for all that time. So I think it's definitely something worth looking into. And, and figuring out, you know, understanding the history of how the animal shelter got there in the first place. You know, because obviously it's not, you know, it's not necessarily directly related to the poor of Milton. So, you know, having a better understanding of, of how it got there, um, I think will definitely be very helpful. I think, again, from a physical perspective, it, it would be much easier to build a building there than on top of the, the former quarry site. But I, I, I just, you know, my, my understanding of the legal issues has, has been, you know, we, we've got to go through a thirty B public process. And the Governor Stotin site was kind of out of consideration, so, um, if, if we can figure something out, I think that would be great. But that's just an explanation of why the committee has been kind of pursuing the package, pursuing for the, the past several years.
Thank you, Tim, Mr. Wells.
I just reiterate, Mr. Chair, I think it'd be prudent of the board to listen to these two, I think that, as, as Nick knows, um, they've done a lot of homework, they've talked to a lot of, I mean, more than anybody else, and, and including us, including Tim, including the committee. I I was skeptical as anything when I first heard it, and the more that I sat and listened to her, I thought to myself, this is a woman who knows what she's talking about. Because again, going back to what I said before, going, I just had a conversation with the outgoing project manager, talked to me the other day about it. I'm truly skeptical that path that this committee is, and it's nothing against them, it's just where they're in or what they're at is going to be in a cost prohibitive manner that it will never, so. I've been involved in this for more than eight years, Tim, so just a thought. So I think, I, again, I don't want to believe, let's move on, but I didn't want to talk about tonight, as I said, Arthur, let's just bring them in, hear from them, and then discuss it at that point.
Yeah, and if I, and, and Mr. Chair, if I can just add, I, I, I don't disagree with Member Wells on this either. I, I, I think you should definitely hear these two out. They, 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 they have compelling arguments, and, and if, if, if there's a way to kind of navigate, you know, those legal issues that we've been wrestling with, and I think it's, it's definitely worth looking into, so I don't, I don't want to appear like I'm contradicting Richard or anything like that, I definitely think it's worth, you know, looking into, I'm just, you know, trying to trying to set the stage for, for, for why we've been pursuing what we've been pursuing.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley, your hand had been up and then it came down.
It did, Mr. Chair, if, if we're gonna discuss this at another meeting, I can save my comments for, for that, it just seems like this is an end run around, and, um, I'm not sure that that's something the town wants to do, but I'm willing, and, and if you would like to have them come and present to us, I will listen with open ears.
Thank you, so, um, we're talking about January ten meeting, which is the Governor Stotin Trust. Did I hear also that you would like to have them present to, at a select board meeting with a specific proposal?
No, the tenth is fine.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that. Uh, anybody else? Any further comments? If not, we'll add, um, item number ten, which is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, that was more of a placeholder in case there was something to be reported out at this particular point in time. Unless somebody does, we can just, uh, pass this forward to our meeting on the eighteenth, do I see anybody who wants to address this particular topic? Not seeing anybody, we'll go to item number eleven, discussion approval, Mass D O T V sponsored the town of Milton letter. Uh, the proposed project at Route twenty-eight Randolph Avenue in Chicago, Robert Road. Uh, Mr. Val, can we turn to you, please?
Sure, so at the last meeting, um, select board had asked that I, I reach out to them and see if, uh, couldn't make contact and get an update on when we should expect a response. Just a tough time of year, I was unable to do so, uh, no fault of anybody at Mass D O P, uh, with the Christmas holiday, the week between Christmas and New Year's. I think it's just poor timing to do so, so, um, I have not, I do not have an update for the select board today. If you would like to move to a formal letter, I'm happy to put something together, um, at this point. I'll defer it to the board.
Uh, would it make sense to have a draft for the January eighteenth meeting?
I can do that.
Others, that be agreeable?
That's fine, Mr. Chair, I'm fine with that.
Let's move with that direction, then, thank you. Item number twelve, discussion approval equity and justice for all.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Zulis.
I'm sorry, Mr. Zulis. Just, just one thought, uh, drafting that, we should, we should, we should put something in with respect to a deadline or requested deadline, so we can have some sense of when we're gonna get a response to that.
A- as we did in the last letter, absolutely, that's an empower, I concur entirely. Thank you. Item number twelve, discussion approval equity and justice for all advisory committee report mailing to town meeting members, Mrs. Zulus has prepared a, a draft. We've, uh, reviewed it together and we have it, uh, he has it before you, Mr. Zulus, can I turn to you?
Uh, sure, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I was commissioned with, uh, putting together the draft, and so I put together the draft, so. Those are really factual, uh, statements about the, about the report, some taken from the report, just in terms of uh, what the committee focused on and what the committee reviewed. And then just some factual statements about the timing and what is being presented, so, that's what the letter really consists of. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any comments, it was, uh, very clear, and I reflect, I believe, very reflective of prior conversations. And we wanted to, uh, have this landing this month. And dearly, um, to town meeting members at the time of the Martin Luther King holidays, is that correct? Uh, Mr. Wells, do I see your hand?
So, m- my only question is I don't want to believe, it seems now that the moderator is pretty clear that he does not want to do this.
That's a separate letter, Mr. Wells, this one is the one that would transmit it to the town meeting members, which the moderator said.
Okay, that's fine, okay.
Make your application, just like what might want to consider doing. Hey, we have a, a motion on the floor, uh, to approve the transmitted letter.
I'll second that if it's not seconded.
Okay, consider it made and seconded, any discussion? Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Busta?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. We also have, um, letter to the town moderator requesting permission for the Equity and Justice for All Committee to make a presentation on their report at the special town meeting in February. We do not have such letter for us this evening, we received today a communication from, um, the moderator, uh, Mr. Hiss. Um, I have not, um, had time to really wrap my mind around all of this, I would like to suggest that it's agreeable to all that we defer this to the January eighteenth meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Wells?
Just one point, maybe might make this easier. I don't know if you're comfortable with some, it might be proven of you and he to have a conversation, I'll file a order to the eighteenth, maybe you and he have a conversation about his position now before we. And then I'd be happy to hear when you come back and suggest to us in the eighteenth, would you be eligible to that?
Be happy to do so, we also have the option of inviting the moderator to join us on the eighteenth.
I'm fine, I, I think I'm fine with it either way, but I, I think it might be proven, just given the relationship that needs to exist between both us and he, that maybe he was chair and he had a conversation before we get to the eighteen. And, and I know you're chair, I'd say, if, well, was chair, if, I would say that too right now, so, just, just, it's just my opinion on it.
Any other thoughts from other members? Okay, are we agreed to defer, uh, Ms. Bradley?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know that I will not be here at that meeting, um, and that I am of the opinion that the, uh, that the Equity and Justice for All Committee should be allowed to speak at the, um, at the special time meeting, so I know that I won't be here for that vote or any conversation about it, but I would just like for you and other members of the committee to know where I stand on that, so thank you.
Thank you for wearing in. Okay, so we'll have this on the agenda for January eighteen, and I will be happy to speak with the moderator. Our next agenda item, I think we return to, uh, you, Nick, uh, this would be for the, uh, post employment benefit policy. Okay?
Uh, sure, Mr. Zulus, okay, if I take her, would you like to? Okay.
Mr. Doyle is in charge, and I think it's great, I think it's great, I think it's, I think it's great.
Yeah, I just thought I'd turn it the, uh, the straighter, and then he could turn it to, uh, you and/or Aaron or both. She's cautiously declined, so Mike, go ahead.
Um, so, a- as was, um, Mr. Zulus, uh, briefly discussed at our previous meeting, uh, the Select Board Finance Committee met and reviewed a draft O P E V, um, policy, um, so just in terms of the big picture, other post employment benefits, AKA O P E V, are, you know, in Milton, essentially health insurance coverage that is provided to retirees. This includes both, um, regular active insur- um, insurance, like full insurance plans that retirees are eligible before they reach Medicare age, at which time the town does provide, um, supplemental Medicare options to retirees, so because, um, of this cost to provide health insurance to retirees, um, we're not contributing to the system as they would as employees, um, the town has what's called an O P E V liability, so a long-term liability related to these, providing these benefits, um, for many years into the future. And our current, um, outstanding net liability is a hundred and sixty-five million dollars. And this policy would create a way, a mechanism for the town to start paying down that liability over the long term. The benefits of doing so and reaching full funding on this liability would be that at a future point in time, um, the town would be able to draw solely from the O P E V trust to pay for retiree health insurance rather than paying for it out of the general fund operating budget, which is something we do today. So each year in the operating budget, um, the town approves, uh, money for health insurance coverage, which includes insurance, insurance not only for active employees, but the cost of providing, um, benefits to retirees. If and when, and the O P E V trust is fully funded, that cost would come out of the operating budget each year. It's approximately between three and a half and four and a half million dollars, um, of annual, um, health insurance costs. So the policy is taken from, um, the standard template that the Massachusetts Department of Revenue Division of Local Services provides to cities and towns, and they work with them on financial policies, so we, we've taken their template, um, and tweaked it for Milton. The key points I'll, I'll highlight in the policy are that, um, it states that the town shall, um, it states that the town acknowledges that this liability is out there, and that the town will make efforts to, um, pay it down. In two key ways, beginning in fiscal twenty twenty-four, the town shall have a goal of appropriating a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars to the O P E V trust. So that would be beginning in the fiscal twenty-four budget, we would, uh, try to do that, that's about the target that the town has set for itself in recent years. Um, in fiscal twenty-three, the contribution to the O P E V trust is close to the thirty-seven, thirty-eight thousand dollars. It had been planned to be a hundred thousand dollars until it changed toward the end of the budget process. The second piece of this is that when the town fully funds its retirement system, which is scheduled to take place, um, during fiscal twenty-six, the year following that, um, the town's retirement costs will drop significantly, because we will no longer be paying into the pension fund to get to full funding. Um, and I'll share just briefly the town, uh, the town's current, um, funding schedule, just to give a sense, so. Right now, um, the town, this is the town's estimate to get to full funding. As you can tell, in fiscal twenty-seven, this five and a half, five point six million dollar contribution, uh, and this is all anticipated and estimate, drops off because it is expected the pension system would reach full funding. That is a contribution that's made from the town's operating budget, so this money would be freed up to be used on, um, things other than paying down the pension, uh, liability. But, so the second part of the O P E V liability would be that we take, um, that money and push it to the O P E V liability from the pension liability. Uh, the, the policy as drafted states that beginning in fiscal twenty-seven after the, or after the town reaches full funding on suspension system, that the town will have a goal of contributing a minimum of two and a half million dollars to, um, the O P E V trust. So it doesn't take that full five and a half million dollars at this time, um, it, it's setting a minimum. The board, as we get closer to that, can certainly reevaluate and, and opt to push more money towards it, but we're setting, um, the policy would set a minimum of two and a half million dollars, um, and that would be increasing at two and a half percent to pay down that liability, and based on discussions with our actuary, um, that would get to full funding, uh, in twenty sixty. that would get to full funding in 2060. So it's certainly for the long haul. So two and a half million dollars at two and a half percent a year would get to full funding in 2060. If was a greater amount, five million dollars, for example, it would take to 2048 to get to full funding. So that, I hope, is not too boring for an explanation on the OPEB trust and liability in this policy, but big picture is what will the town do once the town has reached full funding on pension liability after fiscal 26? And what amount of that money should go toward the OPEB trust for the long term? And the policy as drafted recommends a minimum of two and a half million dollars, increasing it two and a half percent a year for discussion purposes. And I'll certainly let anybody else add any color.
Very thorough and very, very good history, as well as an outline of the direction we're in for some time now on the town. Mike, did you want to join in? And then we'll go to Richard.
Yeah, just two quick points. One, Mr. Chair, this is the financially prudent action to take. And as a result of the financially prudent actions the town has taken over the last six years, we've been able to maintain a AAA bond rating, which is the highest bond rating. The rating, bond rating agencies with whom Mr. Milano was meeting on the 19th or the 20th after our next meeting may choose to look favorably on this financially prudent action in deciding our bond rating going forward. And so the finance subcommittee has voted to support this this policy. We think it's, again, a financially prudent thing to do and that it will help the town. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Wells? Give me the, Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm probably going to abstain because I am a retiree, although I'm already in the system, but but just one question, I agree with Michael 100% on this. I mean, this is something I've been hearing about. You go, this is brought up at town meeting going back 10 years, even more than 10 years. The teachers go into GIC automatically. Do you? Do we encourage that for them as well? So teachers in the Commonwealth are required when they retire to go into the GIC. Do we encourage that aspect of the GIC? How's that paid? Is that included in this?
I'll follow up with you on that piece, but any, any benefit that the town pays after retirement, that's not your actual pension, would be covered by this OPEB trust. So if the town's paying a share of any premium for a retiree, then that, that is all captured and included in the OPEB category. Teachers, when they retire, are part of the mass teachers' retirement system, so they punch our pension system at all. Well, really, anybody with a teaching license, so includes additional staffers, not just teachers, but so it's a little bit different, but any benefit that the town pays to a retiree, whether it's a health insurance premium or life insurance premium, it's all included in this bucket. Certainly, health insurance is by far the biggest part of that.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chair. That was, that was my only question, because I was aware that they would do a different system.
Anybody else? Seeing none? We go to item number four, discussion of climate action. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair, if I, if I just, just for the record, just if I could move to, move to move the OPEB policy to a second reading on, on January 18th.
Okay. There is a motion. Is there a second to Mr. Zulus' motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, because we do have to go through the policy process on this. So it has been seconded by Ms. Bradley. Any questions for the discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Abstain.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Doyle, yes. Thanks, Mike. Item number 14 is the discussion of a climate action planning committee. We have before us a robust charge for planning action, a climate planning action committee. Comes significantly through a period of time. And Mike, would you like to introduce this? The plan is to discuss it tonight and have it on the agenda again on January 18th, following input from members of the select board and others.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the draft that you have is a draft that has been taken from some of the elements of similar committees in other municipalities with input from members of Sustainable Milton, with input from our Director of Economic Planning and Development, Mr. Zawinski, our Assistant Planning Director, Mr. Lee, our Environmental Coordinator, Ms. Patel. And that's the input that we received. So, Mr. Chair, Massachusetts Law Chapter 21 and commits the Commonwealth to limit greenhouse gas emissions to at least 50% of the 1990 baseline by 2030, 75% of that amount by 2040, and to net zero emissions, which means that carbon emissions produced do not exceed those removed from the environment by 2050. Milton has no plan to get there. Milton has no structure to develop a plan to get there. Many other committee, many other communities do. Many other committees, communities have for several years. Milton is behind on this issue. Particularly those who, those other communities who've had similar committees and plans, particularly are communities that have a waterfront that is, could be inordinately affected by climate change, like Milton. Milton needs a plan to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to lessen the effects of climate change. Now, why do we need a plan? Well, we need a plan to bring us into alignment with the state law, Chapter 20 and then. We need to, we need a plan to ensure that we can take full advantage of the federal and state programs and funding opportunities that are becoming available. So how do we get a plan? Well, we get a plan by we, by establishing a committee that is charged with developing a plan. And, Mr. Chair, both the Climate Action Plan and Climate Action Planning Committee are long overdue in Milton. And it is time for this board to take action on climate change. And the draft is for consideration and hopefully for a vote the next time we meet. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Any comments or questions of Mr. Zulus, please? Ms. Musto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question and a comment. First comment is, I appreciate the previous speakers that came to speak about this. And obviously, it sounds like Mike has done some work on this. I'm a little disappointed that I got this at 3 o'clock this afternoon. And I'm expected today to offer some input into it. So I would say that I want to have a chance to read it more. I'm not saying that the merits aren't there and it's good, but I haven't, I haven't been able to read it. I just got it at 3:00. And so I really wish in the future that these would be sent earlier so that I could review them and the other members could review them. And I think that's very important. So I really would hope that in the future that would happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's exactly why it's coming back on the 18th, so that there would be time between now and then for members to forward comments, questions, et cetera, to Mr.'s suggestions to Mr. Zulus. And that would be entertaining for the discussion at that time. So good point. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, now I know I was getting emails today. As I call Mr. Milano, I'm like, is Mike Zulus writing, is there something going on that I don't know about? I already get emails from residents, so I hear you, Roxanne. But clearly, you know, this is something that is important not just to us, it's important to our children, my grandchildren. I did call you today, Nick, because at least from a municipal side, and this policy doesn't mention it, but you know, we've done a lot on our side from the inside, you know, everything from charging stations to electric cars to LED streetlights, converting all municipal buildings to LEDs. I mean, Bill Ritchie, Bill Clark got so many grants over the years from our municipal level. Green credits that we were, I think at one point we signed off to others. So my, my only comment is that hopefully that will, Nick or whoever, Tim will weigh in on this moving forward. I'm, I'm I will, Roxanne, I would like to know about it, but I'm fine with the next meeting moving forward, so. I get it. I mean, it's something we hear about and read about every day. And I do too want to recognize, even though, not that some people say nothing, I do want to recognize, you know, organizations like NEPRA, former Senator Bill Gold and Save a Harbor, all of those, all the work they've done. And only recently, as you mentioned coastal communities like this, so far ahead of us because they see it another way. And sometimes people don't think of us as a coastal community, but you stood on the Rice Smith Bridges, I did last week and watched, we're 11 foot five, 11 foot and a half tide did to the Napa River, we were in a deposit lake, we had no banks last week, so I get enough.
I was very pleased to hear Mr. Zulus mention the coastal area. I sent him a photograph last week. I don't know if you got it, Mike, but Canada Goose walking or swimming down a flooded boatyard.
Oh, I believe it.
Right. Mr. Kane has also been asked to present the draft to the Conservation Commission for their review and hopefully their endorsement. Ms. Bradley, and then I'll come back. I have a couple of suggestions that I can pass along at this time. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could ask you to put this on as one of the last items on the agenda on the 18th. And so it might be a possibility that I could be back and my classes actually get out earlier this, this next semester, so I might be able to make it and make the vote and be recorded. And I would appreciate that if we could make it one of the last items on the agenda.
Would be happy to do so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to move this to second reading.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wells?
I'll make a motion to move this to a second reading. I believe that's what the.
This does not need a second reading right now.
It doesn't? Okay.
Couple of suggestions, Mike, if I may. One is generic for us. When we're going through the work on the your task force, which yielded a substantially developed charge. And several people asked me what a charge is, what's the meaning of a charge, and so on down the line. There may be others out there who have similar questions, so I like keeping the word charge. I was wondering if we might, following the colon, for our committee charges, add something like statement of purpose. So that people understand that's what a charge is. But I'll pass that along for consideration, not only here, but beyond here. Item number one, I do have two suggestions for consideration, recommendations for strategies. And I would insert including, but not limited to greenhouse gas emission reduction, mitigating climate risk, et cetera. Out to the wood energy. And then the addition, going back to what Mike was saying in his commentary, as they affect the town of Milton. I was very, very happy to see the congruence with the, the state. Just three additional thoughts. One, maybe a provision for the inclusion of mention of solutions and innovations. And this is going to be a long-term committee. This is going to go on well beyond my lifespan. And a thought in that regard is whether or not there might be value to holding any public hearings on this topic. Again, just a thought. And my final observation, agreeing with the nine members. I was wondering if number seven could be returned to two from the additional draft in recognizing the importance of this in terms of town administration, that there might be one member appointed by the town administrator. So those are my initial comments. I hope there maybe is some value. And we'll return to this important topic on the 19th, and we thank those people who initiated, thank Mike for picking up the ball and running with it. Sometimes when you have a little bit of a ying and yang at the outset, you get a much better product than you otherwise would have realized. And we're well on our way.
Mr. Chair, I'll make those changes and recirculate the draft.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Turn now to item number 15, the town administrators report. Mr. Milano?
I don't have much this evening. I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Welcome back. A lot of people are taking time off over the past few weeks, enjoying enjoying their opportunity to do so. I unfortunately got COVID myself, so I'll be hiding out from town hall for a few more days before I can return masks. So look forward to getting back to work in the office when I'm able to do so. I did just want to mention a couple of things. In terms of town hall staffing, I had mentioned one retirement last time. We did have retirement, the longtime Assistant Treasurer, Joyce Demetko, retired in December. Crystal Rich, who was an employee in the Building Department, has been working as the Assistant Treasurer, you know, slightly before her retirement for some cross-training. And then since she retired, the town has rehired one position at the Building Department. I believe, I mentioned this previously, Katina Goodridge has been working in the Building Department for several weeks now. And the Town Clerk's Office has hired one of its two positions. She'll be starting in mid-January. But we're still certainly looking for folks who, if anybody knows anybody seeking employment, please check our website or reach out to me directly or to page up Lido HR Director. Two positions, one in the Town Clerk's Office and one in the Building Department. And I just wanted to make that plug as we're in a new year, maybe somebody's looking for a change and wants to come join us in the town of Milton. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. The Chair has just two items to mention, both were home rule petitions. The first was Senate Bill 3127, which pertained to the town administrator. And that was signed by Governor Baker on the 29th of the month. It had been, it had passed the Senate on October 27th. It finally passed the House on December 27th and was assigned by the governor on the 29th. It had been held up in the House Ways and Means. The other bill that we have is 3124. I'm sorry, this is the one that was more held up in the House Ways and Means Committee. It had been there since October 6th. It was enacted by the House on the 29th. And this, by the way, is the Act Establishing Speed Limits in Portions of Route 28 in Chikatavet Road in the town of Milton. It was enacted by the Senate on the same date, 29th of December, and it is currently before the governor. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I stepped away for a second and I just Mr. Milano, did you mention Ms. Fagan by any chance in your comments?
Yikes. Wow. See?
So.
And recovery.
So two things, Mr. Chair. First, I think we need to thank Amory Fagan, who came back to us at a time when we never saw her and we didn't expect that it was very quick. And she stepped quickly back into her role. And she stepped quickly back into her role, and it was as seamless for both the exit of Mr. Dennehy as it was for the entrance of Mr. Milano, and I think on behalf of this board, that we all owe her a debt of gratitude for what she has done for us over the past weeks and months. Secondly, I think that tomorrow is a historic day for our community. We are about to inaugurate the first female governor, elected governor of the Commonwealth, Mara Hailey and her Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, and I think that on behalf of all of us, it, perhaps it may be prudent for us to send a letter signed by the board, just walking and looking forward to work. And as we know from some county delegations, I think us having a relationship with the executive branch is very important. I do know Mara Hailey personally, and I think she'll do a great job for the Commonwealth. But I do think too that perhaps, I don't know how we should do this, going back to Anne Marie, whether we have a quick coffee hour or something in the office one morning, I, I don't, I'm not sure. Maybe some of the other members might have an idea, but she really did provide a a saintly, a saintly role for us. I mean, she just, as you know, Mr. Chair, you worked with her every day. Anne Marie came back and really did us, this town, a great service over the past months. Just a thought, and however you want to lead with that, that's, I'm fine.
Well, let me do that, and then go to Ms. Bradley, if I may. As she was extraordinary, willing to come out of retirement, to step in in an interim role. After Nick joined us, she was willing to stay on and assist in any way that she could. That's now completed, and as she left, she said she'd be willing to volunteer to help the town of Milton in any way possible. That's extraordinary. What would you think, Mr. Wells, of a resolution from the Select Board? Something that we could extend to her as a physical memorialization, that she could then have as a permanent possession, probably in a nice place of visibility, so that she and her family and others would know of our appreciation for her service.
I found that, my only call was, I, I think, Nick, you should look in a folder, make sure that, that I was, I drew, I came back to the board a year after she left. Just want to make sure there isn't one already in there, because if there is, maybe we do something different. If there is, if there isn't, then I'd, I'd be filed out.
Okay, so you can follow up on the eighteen?
Sure.
Thank you. Ms. Bradley, and then Ms. Masto?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add a little addendum on to what Member Wells was saying. Not only is Mara Hailey the first female governor of our, elected governor of our Commonwealth, she's the first openly gay woman elected in the entire country. So I just wanted to put that out there as well as something that is, once again, Massachusetts being the first of something that is so wonderful for our country to be moving forward with our embracing of all folks and all all people in the nation. So I just wanted to add that as a piece to his.
Can I borrow a moment of your time, Roxanne, for just a moment? I think Richard mentioned swearing in is tomorrow. I think it's Thursday, the fifth. Is that correct?
Thursday morning.
First Wednesday, there's a very convoluted Massachusetts formula for the swearing, inauguration of the governor that.
It is, it's Thursday morning.
In any event, close at the end. And Richard, you had suggested that something be prepared in the way of a communication from the Select Board to the incoming governor?
Just a short, a short congratulatory letter, just, you know, she did come here.
Did I get that?
I'll do, I'll be glad to do it. I'll be, and I'll send it to Nick, and then he can send it on. It'll be short, sweet, just.
She'd probably appreciate that.
She will.
Ms. Masto?
Um, thank you.
My motto has always been brevity, you know, clarity, charity, so on down the line. Ms. Masto?
Um, yes, thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to also thank Anne Marie for her service. Quite a remarkable story for someone who worked her way up through the ranks at town halls into that position. So I give her a lot of credit. She really worked hard and a lot of relationships with people, and I was so happy to see her come back to help out when we really needed help, so I did want to thank her for that. Also wondering if there's a way to reach out to our state senator and our reps and see if there's a way to give her some kind of a citation that they could prepare for her. I think that would be special. So just wonder if Mr. Milano is able to do that. I think that would be really great. And I do have something very separate that has nothing to do with that, but I was wondering if it would be possible for us, when we have our select board meetings and we get our packets, that, and I know we had talked about this at one point, that we could post some of those materials so that if the public wanted to read up or comment on anything for Citizen Speak, they would have some of the information ahead of time, you know, and in the spirit of transparency, I think that would be a good thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our future reading dates, the itemizes January tenth for the meeting of the Governor's Stoughton Trustees. We plan to have that as a meeting per se. If we have other select board business, we can add it to that meeting. There may be something in the offing. Then, of course, our next regularly scheduled select board meeting on the eighteenth. Then we move into February seventh, and then Monday, February thirteen. Ms. Masto, your hand is still up. Did you have something additionally to add? Okay, thank you.
The thirteenth, Mr. Chair, is town meeting, correct? Special town meeting?
That's correct. So at this time, we will be moving into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located at nine thirty Brook Road, Fonton Convent. I'll read the the motion. I move to enter into executive session to consider the purchase exchange lease of value of real property located nine thirty Brook Road, Fonton Convent, just as I just showed up. Based upon my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the Select Board. The Select Board will not return to open session. We will adjourn from executive session.
Second.
And the next, okay, seconded, and any discussion, we have to vote on an individual basis. Seeing none, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Masto and Mr. Doyle, yes?
Yes.
The second is executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Chapter Thirty Eight, Paragraph Twenty One, subsection A three, to discuss strategy in respect to litigation against the Massachusetts Patriots and Authority, guiding the condition of the stairs located at the MBTA Station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. I move to enter into an executive session to discuss litigation strategy against the Massachusetts Patriots and Authority, MBTA, related to the condition of the stairs at the MBTA Station located at Adam Street, Milton, Mass. Based on my belief that discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. Again, to reiterate, the Select Board will be adjourned from executive session and not returning to open session. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Move to the seconded. Seeing now, hands, Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Masto?
Yes.
And Mr. Doyle, yes. Thank you. And now, Lynn, we will close out from this Zoom, and we'll be going to.
Mr. Chair, we're, we're gonna stay right here. We'll let everybody log off.
Do that. We don't have to go to another location as earlier discussed. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so we will, we have some attendees. We'll ask them to drop off the meeting, you said? Happening?